Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 28th. We do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. And this morning we have Pastor Joseph Winger from the Boulder Street Church. We invite you to stand and join us.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to base the invocation today off of First Chronicles 29, the end of it, where King David prayed over his nation. And he said, "We thank you, our God. We praise your great name. You deserve that people praise you forever. Lord, you are great and powerful. You rule as king over everything in heaven and on earth. Everything that we have comes from you. We live here only for a short time, and then we disappear like a shadow. We want to give honor to your holy name. All things of value come from you. They already belong to you. Yes, Lord, everything belongs to you, and you are the one who supplies us with resources. My God, I know that you look carefully at our thoughts. You are pleased when we want to do the things that are right. We have great, you have great strength and power, so you are able to make people strong. King David said, "Everything belongs to you. You are the one who supplies us with resources." Father, we and I right now come into agreement with Commissioner Geithner, who recently said, "Leading the state once again shows that El Paso County is where innovation meets opportunity. Thank you for this reality. We thank you for your gracious resources for our county, the opportunities you provide. We're thankful for our county's recognition for excellence in financial management and strategy. That's a wisdom that can only come from you, and we're grateful. Father, thank you. So continue giving our leaders wisdom on any deficit and any financial needs and just management needs, oversight needs." And King David also prayed here in this prayer. "My God, I know that you look carefully at our thoughts. You are pleased when we want to do the things that are right. You have great strength and power, so you're able to make everyone strong. Father, I release my faith and pray that you make our over 1,500 county employees strong today and this week, ending the year strong. Give grace for clear thinking, right-thinking, innovative thinking, creative thinking, God-inspired ideas to keep us the strongest county in Colorado. We commit this business day unto your hands. Bashem. Amen.
Commissioner Williams, if you'd lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Item three.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and I'm unaware of any staff emergency items today.
Item four.
Item number four is changes, postponements, and notice of the next meeting. I'm unaware of any changes or postponements to today's agenda, and the next meeting will be Tuesday, November 4th at 9:00 a.m.
Okay, and before we move to item five, we do have one Commissioner who is away at a conference today, and so I'd ask for a motion to excuse Commissioner Weisong.
I move to excuse Commissioner Weisong.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and I will call the roll. Now, beginning with Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 4-0. Item five.
Item number five is the consent calendar, including items 5A through 5J1.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on an item on the consent calendar? Seeing none in the room and none online, I will bring it up here for any comments or motion.
I do have just two comments. First of all, the county commissioners are actually absorbing in the El Paso County Board of Adjustment because they had so few meetings that we decided that was something we could do ourselves. Thank you to our county attorney and to, I believe, Steve Klafke for helping with that. And I wanted to thank all of the members of our Board of Adjustment. We had a small party last week, and they've, when they do meet, they work hard, and I appreciate all of their service. And I also wanted to thank Rebecca Clunt for her many years of work at the Department of Human Services. It is a job in and of itself. It's not the easiest job to do, so it takes a lot of patience there. And with that, I will move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. If there are no additional comments, and seeing, oh, Commissioner Nelson.
I'll just add on to the Board of Adjustment change. It also comes down to accountability in that there is not an appeals process for the decision that comes out of that Board of Adjustment. And so we felt that it would make the most sense for the elected officials to be the ones responsible and accountable for the decisions that are made there, and that we are here to govern the county, and so to not put it, that responsibility on volunteers. So that's just an additional point that made us reach the decision we did. But thank you to those that were willing to serve. And we have lots of other boards and committees that we need volunteers, so take a look at the website.
Okay, that I will call the roll. Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 4-0. Item six.
Item number six is a proclamation recognizing National Veterans Small Business Week and Small Business Saturday 2025. Corey Applegate, Commissioner, Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'm going to be reading a proclamation where we're recognizing our National Veterans Small Business Week and Small Business Saturday in this year in 2025. And I do say, this is that kind of community where it's like a veterans community. We see a lot of people get out of the Air Force. We see a lot of people get out of the Army here in this name, in this community, and they start those small businesses, and it's really cool. And I think a lot of people are, they root for them, they root for their friends, they root for the people they served with. So whereas, National Veterans Small Business Week, November 3rd through the 7th, honors and empowers our service members, veterans, members of the National Guard and Reserve, and military spouses who contribute to our economy through entrepreneurship. And whereas, veteran-owned businesses are a vital part of Colorado's economy, representing approximately 6.2% of all businesses statewide and owned or co-owned by more than 38,600 veterans. And whereas, Colorado is home to more than 730,000 small businesses, which make up 99.5% of all Colorado businesses and employ over 1.2 Coloradans, nearly half of the state's private workforce. And whereas, small business remains at the heart of Colorado's economy, resilience and innovation, with more than 30,000 new establishments opening between March 2023 and March 2024, resulting in a net gain of 1,189 new businesses and a 6,384 job increase from among small firms statewide. And whereas, veteran entrepreneurs continue to demonstrate leadership and ingenuity by building companies that strengthen our communities, create jobs, and contribute Colorado's diverse economy across industries, including professional services, construction, healthcare, and manufacturing. And whereas, veteran-owned small businesses exemplify the values of service, perseverance, and commitment to their continued success is essential to both the state's economic vitality and its proud legacy of supporting those who have served. And whereas, on November 29th, we will celebrate Small Business Saturday, supporting the entire small business community, including veterans who have transferred discipline, work ethic, and accountability, problem-solving, and adaptability, and learned from their time in service to hundreds of local veteran-owned businesses. And whereas, National Veterans Small Business Week and National Small Business Saturday exemplify our commitment to honoring and supporting the entrepreneurial spirit of our community. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of El Paso County hereby recognizes November 3rd through the 7th of 2025 as National Veterans Small Business Week and November 29th, a Small Business Saturday, and encourages residents to invest in our community by supporting our small, local businesses and helping them thrive. That is done this day on October 28th, 2025, at Colorado Springs, Colorado. Board of County Commissioners, Chair Carrie Geithner, Vice Chair Holly Williams, Corey Applegate member, Lauren Nelson, and Bill Weisong. And this is attested to by Steve Sliekler, our county clerk and recorder.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Good morning. If you would introduce yourself for the record, and we'd love to hear from you.
Very good. Thank you so much. Commissioner Applegate, thank you so much for reading that. Madam Chair, thank you for the invite today. And Commissioners, thank you for allowing us to celebrate this wonderful week. My name is Brandon Eldridge. I am the Executive Director at the Colorado Small Business Development Center, serving the Pike's Peak region. I'm proud today to join you, recognizing a very special group of entrepreneurs whose courage, determination, and commitment to excellence embody the American spirit and the strength of our local economy, our veteran-owned small businesses. Each year, National Veterans Small Business Week gives us the opportunity to honor those who once wore our uniform and now wear the badge of entrepreneurship. These men and women continue to serve our nation, not on the battlefield, but in the boardroom, the workshops, and in the marketplace, strengthening our local economy and inspiring us through their resiliency and leadership. At the Colorado SBDC, serving Pike's Peak, and our host, the Colorado Springs Chamber and EDC, we are privileged to walk alongside these veteran-owned small businesses through every stage of growth, from idea to launch, from survival to success. We are also grateful for the unwavering support of our partners at the Small Business Administration and our other federally-funded colleagues at SCORE, VBAC, and many other organizations who stand ready to support those who have served. The Colorado VBAC, hosted by Mount Carmel Veteran Service Center, is also here today. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Aaron Groziak. Where are you at, Aaron? Oh, behind me over here, sorry. And their Executive Director, Joe Regan, who's also supporting the same proclamation as we speak at the city. You could say we are dividing and conquering today. I would also like to extend my sincere appreciation to Crystal Latier and the entire El Paso County Economic Development Team, as well as Vernon Stewart at the El Paso County Department of Community Resources. Together, their steadfast partnership has been instrumental in advancing programs that empower our local businesses, strengthen our entrepreneurial ecosystem. Both teams continue to embody the investment that El Paso County has made in small businesses and ensures that veterans have the resources they need to transition their military discipline into business success. I'm proud to say that as part of the Veterans Small Business Week, we will once again host the Veterans Small Business Conference on November 7th at Great Wolf Lodge. In our 18th year, this event is presented by Huntington Bank, brings together nearly 400 veterans, 40 resource partners, 30 veteran-owned vendors, 15 hands-on workshops, and one Santa Claus. It is the largest of its kind in the state, and it serves as a living example of what happens when the public and private sectors work together to lift up those who have served. So today, as we issue this proclamation, let it be more than a statement on paper. Let it be a reaffirmation of our community's commitment to our veterans. Let us continue to invest in their dreams, amplify their voices, and celebrate their contributions to our local community. When we support veteran entrepreneurs, we are not just honoring their past, we are building a stronger, more resilient future for El Paso County and the Pike's Peak region. Thank you. I have a couple veteran entrepreneurs here who'd like to say a few words if I, if I can. I'd first like to pull up, call up Michael with Unharnessed Potential. Michael, once again, am I right? Here we go. Come on down, bud.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Vice Chair, County Attorney, friends. My name is Michael. I am an equine specialist with Unharnessed Potential. I just recently retired from the Army after 24 years and was honored to be able to be a part of Unharnessed Potential. It was founded in 2019 by Aaron and Dave Slivka, and he was a, was a large part of that and using their resources to help form that. And it is a 501(c)(3) where they take rescue horses and they help rescue people. So it's equine psychotherapy, and it's just a full circle of healing. It's veteran-run, veteran-owned, and it's there for veterans. We do partner through the VA Adaptive Sports Grant and through Wounded Warrior Project in order to fund housing and feeding the horses. And then that makes it to where none of the, none of the veterans have to pay anything. Nothing comes out of insurance or anything like that. It is a free resource for veterans in order to, as you said, become resilient and move forward after service. But thank you for letting me speak and having me here and for this proclamation.
Give him a spin here, show him the back of the shirt here. There you go.
I'd now like to ask Sam Westfall for Valor Archery to come down.
Morning, Commissioners. So Sam Westfall, Valor Archery Challenge. I use archery as therapy, and that's what Valor Archery Challenge is all about, is bringing that archery as therapy to the military-connected community. Also an IVMF ambassador for Colorado Springs Institute, Syracuse University Institute for Military Veterans and Families, getting into entrepreneurship. Thanks to Brandon, been able to help branch that into a little bit bigger spectrum within the community, helping more veteran or military-connected entrepreneurs reach into that entrepreneurial space, get more resources outside of what the SBDC and VBAC may offer, more coaching and capital resources. So thank you for hosting this. Thank you for putting this together and bringing the Small Business Week to life.
And finally, Ishmael Whitley with Veterans Touch Woodwork, Woodcrafting.
How you doing? I do custom woodworking from women's earrings to floating bids. I was stationed here 2024 with Second ID. I've been deployed three times, and this is like home to me. I got medically retired through blood clots in my lungs in, in El Paso in 2013, and I came back here, just, I love this place. And hooking up with Brandon and SPD Center, they got me squared away with my business. I've been running my business four years coming on now. I'm on Peterson as a vendor now. This summer, I just did all the archery stands for Warrior Games downtown upon platforms and stuff like, I just love Colorado. And I thank you for the opportunity to sit here and just tell my story a little bit. Thank you for SPD Center and Brandon, and guys are great. This event's gonna be great. Last year, I got, I got accredited with Better Business Bureau, and that's how I landed the contract with Warrior Games. So it's been a great opportunity for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. And then do we have someone here from Mount Carmel as well?
Aaron is with the VBAC hosted by Mount Carmel, so.
Great.
As Brandon mentioned, my name is Aaron Groziak. I'm with the Colorado VBAC, the Veteran Business Outreach Center. We really just like to thank the Colorado Springs community for all their support. We will continue to work with our existing and new resource partners to help out the veteran business community. We are looking forward to the Veterans Small Business Week, November 3rd through 7th, as mentioned, and especially the Veteran Conference on November 7th. We hope that all the veteran entrepreneurs can come out and join us that day. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. I'm going to bring it up now for Commissioner comments before we take our vote. And of course, we'll take a brief recess when we, when we've completed that for a photo. Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the individuals who were here this morning and for all of our veteran-owned businesses in El Paso County. We bring the, the veterans bring that service ethic that they come. After 24 years of service in the Army, I noticed that, I guess my dad would have been a veteran-owned small business when he started, but he served in Korea for a few years. But they bring that work ethic, and they apply it to their business. They apply it to our community, and it is just wonderful. And I think that's why El Paso County thrives. So thank you.
Commissioner Nelson.
Thank you for your service to our country, and I think it's so admirable how you have found a new area to serve. And entrepreneurs are to be greatly respected, in my opinion, because you are the risk-takers. And it is amazing how you can take your unique gifts and skills and then use them to serve our community in ways that benefit all of us. And so thank you for the work that the SBDC performs in our community and helping support these small businesses. And just thank you for how you continue to serve our country through your business now.
I will just add my thanks as well. I really love it when I get to see long-term Army veterans. We hear a lot of Air Force veterans in this community. We have a lot of other veterans, and as an Army spouse, that's always, always a fun thing for me. So thank you for your service, but also thank you for continuing to contribute to our community in meaningful ways. I know that maybe, maybe it makes a lot of sense that our, our veterans are the risk-takers, the entrepreneurs, because they've taken the ultimate risks in their lives. I'm really grateful for that. My husband is also a, a small business owner now as a, as a veteran. And so I really am grateful for the entire network of people in our community who support each other, and also to the SBDC for, you know, raising these folks up and just always supporting our business community. I know that's incredibly important. Sometimes I think people forget that small businesses, even with an employee or two, are such a huge part of our economy. And that can, can be easy to look at the big boxes or, you know, just those ones that we see prominently and think that that's the business community. But really, it's the, the small business that is the backbone of our economy and so important. So thank you.
You're here.
And we will let Commissioner Applegate wrap up with any comments he may have.
The only thing I have to say is thank you, Brandon, for coming here today, and thank you for the resources you provide for the community. Thank you to the business owners that show up today, the veterans. Thank you for your service. Thanks for serving the community and now being, now that you're retired, you're out, you got your small business, so that's awesome. So we appreciate all you guys do, and let's make it a great Small Business Saturday, so.
Okay, with that, I will call the roll, beginning with Commissioner Nelson.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that passes 4-0, and we will take a brief recess for a photograph.
I'll call this meeting back to order. We are on item seven.
Item number seven is comments by elected officials and Commissioner liaison reports. 7A Coroner Annual Report, Dr. Emily Russell-Kinsley, Coroner.
Good morning. I'm gonna have someone come down and assist you. Sorry about that.
I wonder if I turned it off when I moved it. Good morning. I don't know about you guys, but all that talk about Small Business Saturday made me really excited for my Christmas shopping. And of course, I'm appreciative for the veterans too. I'm Dr. Emily Russell-Kinsley. I'm the coroner and chief medical examiner, and thank you for letting me come and present the annual report. It's a little late in the year, I recognize that, and I appreciate your patience as this was delayed with some other things my office was taking on. Just a reminder, the statistics that we'll be talking about apply to the cases that fall under our jurisdiction, the cases that we've brought in for autopsy. And our jurisdiction is outlined by CRS 310606, which states that the cases that fall under our jurisdiction, any sudden, unexpected, non-natural death, any unexplained death, anytime a physician can't certify the death, industrial accidents, deaths in custody, and deaths due to public health threats. This was just a letter. I actually released the annual report, I think about six weeks ago, because I knew that people were needing that information. It's useful for nonprofits, for government, the media is always curious, and so I released the report earlier. And it's available on our website for anyone who wants more detail than we're talking about today. So in 2024, we investigated 6,310 deaths. It was a four and a half percent increase from the year before, and we autopsied 1,216 decedents, and that was a 22% decrease from the year before. And I'll explain that in a minute. This is a line graph of our, the number of cases that we've investigated over time. I actually began here back in 2012 when our caseload was a lot, a lot lower. You can see it's definitely increased over time. And then this shows the autopsies that we've performed over time. So the last one was the cases we've investigated, and this is the cases that we've actually brought in to autopsy over time. So the gray line represents the total cases, the blue line represents El Paso County cases, and then the orange line represents the out-of-county cases for the other counties that we support. The big peak in the orange line in 2023 represents the return to nature cases. And that is the reason that we had that drop in cases from '23 to '24. As I mentioned, we perform autopsies for multiple other counties. In 2024, it was 21 other counties, which comprises about a third of the state. And I think that's really great for our community that we're able to provide this service, because it gives us an idea of what, what's impacting folks in the counties surrounding Our performance metrics, we had an average of 37.7 days from date of autopsy to case completion, with 5% of the cases requiring more than 60 days. When a case goes over 60 days, it's typically because we need, we need more information, we're waiting on more information, we're doing additional testing, like toxicology testing, maybe some genetic testing, maybe we need another pathologist to look at the brain, look at the heart, and those will slow down our turnaround time. So when we are looking at the cases that we autopsied in 2024, 38.5% of them fall under the manner of natural death, which means that the person died solely from natural causes. 36.4% were due to an accident, about 18% due to suicide, and 6% due to homicide. The undetermined cases, there were eight, and those are cases where we don't have enough information to place that cause of death into one of the other four manners, being natural, accident, suicide, homicide. And most of those are infants usually, which are pretty tough cases. And then there's one other category here, unclassified, and that's what we're using to represent fetuses, because fetuses don't have a manner of death on their death certificate. So we just call them unclassified for the purpose of this chart. And those are usually cases where, you know, maybe the mother was in a car accident, or and they come in, or murdered, or something like that. So there were 334 deaths due to natural causes. As you saw, we investigated over 6,000 cases. So there's a lot more folks dying from natural disease. Those are the cases that we're releasing, right? There's a lot more people dying from natural diseases that aren't represented here. One of the things I'm trying to do is to, because I, we still get questions about why folks are dying from natural disease in our community as well. And so one of the things I'm trying to do, most of the cases, most of the deaths in our county come through our office, but not all of them. And so I'm working with the state in order for those death certificates to come through our office. A, it's important for us to see what's going on in our community, but B, we can catch errors when we're doing that. And so this year, we've already caught multiple accidental deaths that as someone, you know, progresses with natural disease, originally due to an accident, that accident gets forgotten. And so we're able to catch those. We even caught a homicide this year. And so I think that the process of, of going through those is really important for our community. So the number one killer in, in our natural cases is cardiovascular disease. That's really not a surprise. That would be consistent with national trends as well. Something that I think is important to keep an eye on is deaths due to chronic alcohol abuse. There was a, a report recently released that showed in the past 25 years the dramatic increase in deaths due to chronic alcohol abuse. In 2023, I remember, we had a bump in the chronic alcohol abuse cases that we brought in. It went down this year, but I do think that's an important thing for us to keep an eye on in our community. The other big change in the natural deaths is, I actually made a new category this year. You can see about a third of the way up from the bottom, chronic substance abuse. And so there are five deaths in that category. Two of those folks were due to the cannabinoid hyperemesis syndrome, and the remaining three, I pulled out from the third item on the list, the non-COVID-19 infections, because these were folks who died as a result of their infections from long-term intravenous drug use. And I just, I felt that it painted a clearer picture than just lumping it with, you know, like pneumonia or something. So, so that's why I did that. Deaths due to accidents. So we had a 17% decrease in deaths due to accidents in 2024, with a 27% decrease from drug deaths. Unfortunately, in, in this, in, you know, with these decreasing trends, we did unfortunately also see a 34% increase in deaths due to motor vehicle accidents. When we're looking at the suspected primary cause of the motor vehicle crash, and this is, this is suspected at the time of autopsy, reckless driving and excessive speed were the cause in 41, the primary cause, in 41% of those deaths. 33% of them involved motorcycles, and 22% of them involved pedestrians. When we take out the pedestrians, when we exclude the auto pedestrian accidents from the lump of motor vehicle collisions, you guys can't see it, but when we take out the pedestrians, motorcycles represented 41% of the non-pedestrian deaths. And so that is someone who was either driving or a passenger on a motorcycle. As I mentioned, we had a decrease, a 27% decrease in our drug overdose deaths, accidental drug overdose deaths, and fentanyl decreased 44%. Now, while we had a decrease in fentanyl, we had methamphetamine once again became the number one drug involved in these overdose deaths. So when you look at the bottom box, we list out the most common drugs in death, and you can see methamphetamine surpassed fentanyl and its analogues with 85 methamphetamine deaths, 71 fentanyl and its analogues deaths, and then cocaine is pretty far behind with That 27% decrease in overdose death was consistent with statistics across the United This shows the total drug deaths over time, starting from 2019 to 2024. You can see the peak in total drug deaths was in 2021. And then the blue line represents methamphetamine, and the orange line represents fentanyl. So we have that peak in fentanyl in 2023. There's a lot of information in the annual report, and like I said, it's available on our website. And so in the interest of time, of everyone's time, I'll, I'll just skip over this and you guys can read it, but there's more information like this and additional information in that report. Deaths due to homicide, it was pretty steady with 51%, I'm sorry, 51 deaths due to homicide in 2024. 71% of those were firearms were used, followed by six with sharp force. So that would be things like stabbing and cutting. And then blunt force follows that with five, and that would be things like beating someone up, hitting them with a car, something like that. 17 of those deaths, the circumstance was an altercation, followed by 10 where we didn't know at the time of autopsy what the circumstances were, followed by nine, which were domestic, family, or intimate partner violence. Deaths due to suicide, we had an 18% decrease in suicides. 93 of those were by a firearm, 29 with a ligature, and 20 with the use of drugs. And again, this is another set of facts. You guys are free to, you don't need me to read it to you, but like I said, there's a lot of more disinformation and other information in the full report. Child fatalities, so this is, you know, folks who are 17 and under. We had 28 deaths in 2024, and seven of those were determined to be due to natural causes. Six were due to infant unsafe sleep and asphyxia. Four suicides and four homicides. And then for our unhoused population, there was a 37% decrease in drug-related deaths, with 31 deaths due to drug intoxication, nine from hypothermia or exposure, five for motor vehicle collisions.
Can I ask just a quick question?
Yes.
On that last slide?
Yes.
How do you classify if, let's say, drug intoxication is part of the reason someone ends up in a situation where they are exposed to extreme temperatures? How do you classify that?
So that would fall under an exposure, and we would say, you know, for example, exposure, hypothermia in the setting of alcohol intoxication, or in the setting of fentanyl intoxication, but we would ultimately call it a hypothermia. So our takeaway is, like I said, we do have some really great news. A 17% decrease in accidental deaths overall, with a 27% decrease in drug overdoses, and a 44% decrease in fentanyl. 18% decrease in suicide deaths, with a 60% decrease in minors. A 37% decrease in drug-related deaths in our unhoused population. Unfortunately, there was an increase in motor vehicle fatalities, 41% due to reckless driving and excessive speed, and 41% of non-pedestrians were driving or a passenger on a motorcycle. What questions do you have for me?
Okay, well, everyone is thinking about their questions. I do, I want to say thank you for including some of that national trend data as well. I think that's really helpful in identifying whether there are specific things going on in our community, or if we're just part of a broader trend. For my colleagues who are not on the opioid council, interestingly, we had a conversation with our law enforcement sharing what they are seeing in the drug community, and this really reflects that, which is lower fentanyl, but we're seeing a rise again in meth. And then also, maybe we're not seeing quite yet, but what our law enforcement is reporting is a rise in cocaine. I think that's really interesting when we look at our national stage, where we know that the border, the southern border has been closed, we are seeing less fentanyl coming through there. So perhaps that is a contributing factor that we're seeing across the United States. But I think also hearing that Columbia, excuse me, Colombia is starting to increase their production of cocaine. That used to be under, way more under control, and with different governments and leadership, we are seeing that more of that is being grown in Colombia, and it's interesting that it's starting to creep up here. So I think it's just a really good reminder of, we can do a lot of things locally. There are also a lot of things that we are impacted on the national stage that have huge impacts on what we see downstream in our community. Commissioner Williams.
It's, it's hard to say that I'm pleased with the report about.
It's, it's hard to say that I'm pleased with the report about people dying. But a decrease in suicide, a decrease in accidental deaths, especially the decrease in the drug overdoses with fentanyl. Is, is very, very rewarding to see. That we're starting to get some of our messages somehow through to people about fentanyl. But, you know, as we have found, and I'm not perhaps the best driver in the world, but I'm not an aggressive driver. The increase in fatal motor vehicle incidents continues to be a huge concern around the region. I serve on Pikes Peak County Council of Governments. We've discussed this many times. Just, we don't know how to encourage people to just slow down and take your time to get to work. And the aggressive driving, excessive speed is just not worth it. It really isn't. I worry about the motorcycle deaths, but a lot of, I think, in in riding a motorcycle, I think that people. Who choose to ride a motorcycle, which I only did as a very young teenager, choose some of that risk. Because they love it so much and that's great. That's freedom for you. But the, when you get into a car that is, you know, you've got a driver's license, you have a car. It really is kind of a privilege to be able to drive this, this car. I just wish that we could find a way to get through to people that it's not worth the excessive speed. It's not worth pulling in front of a fifty nine year old like me with three inches to spare. And scaring the living daylights out of me when I could just, you know, I don't have that fast of reaction time anymore. And so I do wish we could find a way that to make people more aware that. It's just not themselves on the road, but there are other people on the road who. My daughter has promised she'll take away my driver's license at age seventy, which is only eleven years away. But until then, I am free to drive. You know, it's just not, I, I wish that there was any way we could get a message across better. And it's just something we continually have to work at. And I, you know, that it shows in this report that we're just not taking the time to slow down and be careful.
You know, I think I get my, my whole office, right? We get a really different view of our existence as a community, doing the work that we do. Talking to the family members, you know, every day about, you know, the unfortunate. Thing that happened to their loved one. So I'm probably, you know, more cautious, given all the things that I've seen over the years. I, I do think that it's terrifying. I, when I released the report, but you know, I, I released it with that statement. And in the statement, like I said, because we're, we're talking to these families and friends and, you know, loved ones. Daily, and I just asked that everyone remember, everyone you're on the road with is someone's child, spouse, friend. You know, everyone you're on the road with is important to someone else. Or what little bit that's worth.
Commissioner Nelson.
I'm curious, do you track if there are connections to people like texting while they're driving? And would that fall under the reckless driving category or is that a separate category?
I'll have to go back and look at it. The information that is provided to us for the crashes is provided to us by law enforcement. And so.
So they've already categorized it as reckless driving?
Yes, so yes, I think that would, I believe that that does fall under reckless driving.
And then can you explain the difference of when you say you've investigated a case versus performed an autopsy? What does that look like?
Yes, so that goes all the way back to the beginning where, let's see, there we go. So total investigations. So when we're looking at our total investigations, that is all the cases that are reported to us. Whether it's at the time of death or even if it comes to us through a death certificate. Without a call in, in the moment. And so that is, that's pretty close to the number of people who die in El Paso County. But it's not the absolute number. And so what I'm, what I've been working on is us getting, meeting that absolute number. And it's been tougher than I expected it would be, but we are getting closer to that. So once those cases are reported to us, the majority of those cases will release. You know, let's say we get a phone call about someone who died in a, in a facility. They know why they died, it's of natural causes and they're, the physician is willing to sign that death certificate. That's, that's really all that we need. We don't even need to go to the facility at that point. Or we could go, someone dies at home. We go to their home, we do our investigation. We believe there's no concern for, you know, accident, overdose, foul play. And so we, or self harm. And so we will, and they've been to their physician in the last year. And it's consistent with them dying of natural causes. Will release that case for their physician to sign the death certificate. So, and then they don't come, come in. So those are the cases, you know, in the six thousand.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have another question on the fentanyl statistic. I, it was interesting to me to see the average age was forty one. And I think I had it in my head that this is a drug that impacts younger, like kids more. And so that just stood out to me. I think I was misinformed.
We had been, we've been tracking the average age of fentanyl deaths versus, you know, other drug deaths for years. And it's consistently been lower than the other average. However, over the years, it has been creeping up. So you, you are correct. And a few years ago, that average was younger.
Okay, and I guess I shouldn't say misinformed, I may have made some assumptions, but um. So we are seeing the age. And is it, this is going to show my naivety, and I guess that's probably a good thing that I don't know very much about drugs. But is it that they are taking something that was laced with fentanyl? And or was it that they were choosing to use fentanyl and then that triggered the death?
I think in the, in the majority of cases, they're choosing to take something with fentanyl. But, you know, we're definitely seeing. Drugs that are laced with other, other drugs. I did a safety. Release within the last month about car fentanyl. Because we had pills that, you know, they, they're supposed to, they look like oxycodone, right? So they're supposed to be oxycodone. They, they don't have oxycodone and then they have fentanyl to the, so we call them fentanyl pills, even though there's, look like something else, right? And so this fentanyl pill, it didn't even have any fentanyl in it, it was only car fentanyl. And so, you know, you, you, you don't know what you're getting when you're using these, these drugs. But a lot of the folks do have a history of fentanyl use. So you could assume that they knew they were using fentanyl.
Well, I appreciate you coming and presenting, this is really interesting data to look at and not fun. But good for us to be aware of the issues in our community. And at the opioid abatement council meeting on Wednesday, you're just sharing about the. Lab testing that you're able to do and seeing what kinds of chemicals or drugs are out in our community. And so that we can be aware, it just helps us be more informed and to educate people. And hopefully tackle some prevention that we don't end up having these numbers increase.
The new instrument will definitely help. It will streamline things in our lab. I would expect because we're not having to search as hard for things. We, you know, could potentially improve our turnaround time. And it will definitely give better information to the community.
And the, when you were saying you serve almost a third of the state with providing for other counties. That encompasses that toxicology report as well, correct? Like, are you helping to see things that are happening throughout other parts of Colorado in that sense?
I think, I think I understand your question. Yes, we would use the same instrument for those other, those out of county cases as well, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I just have a couple more questions, this doesn't look like anyone else does. So one is, we're looking at raw numbers here. And so I'm seeing, you know, the numbers increased, but we've also had a population increase. So, and maybe that's in your full report and I just need to go finish reading that. But, you know, how do you take that into account? Because obviously, when we look at those, especially those numbers and drops and suicides and, and those numbers. Adjusted for population, we're probably even doing better than what we would looking at those raw numbers. So just your thoughts on, is, is, do you have that data in the annual report? Or do you look at that, these numbers adjusted for population at all?
We did not include two thousand and twenty four population data in the annual report. But yes, I agree with you, our population's growing all the time. And, and I think that that's, you know, a lot of why our total investigations have increased. We did, you know, we did decrease during, during COVID, we did decrease the number of cases we were bringing in. Until that time, we had been bringing in any non natural death. So that was to include, you know, like elderly falls. If you have a, a, a simple, you know, mechanical fall in your home and you're an elderly person. You, you know, break your hip, you get a subdural. Until COVID, all of those were coming in and we were just, you know, taking a look at them, doing an external, reviewing the medical records. And, and when COVID hit, we were concerned about spreading disease in the community, right? And so we stopped bringing in those cases if it was fully diagnosed. And, and the clinician could sign the death certificate if someone died from a simple fall in their home. We stopped bringing those cases in. And so. You know, we've, we've made up for it in other cases since that, that time.
I just think it'll be interesting, I mean. To apply that because, for example, we're saying, oh, we have this huge number of increases in, in folks dying in car accidents. But how much of it is due to population? That, that's really, you know, and the same thing, like I said, we may be underselling what's happening on the suicide portion. When you consider that that is going down drastically, but we are not accounting for the fact that it continues to go down at a large rate. Even while our population is growing. So just, so, just a, an interesting perspective, I think, because we know that our population is growing. And then I'm really, so this motorcycle conversation, and this is not the first time we've had this conversation, I think. And I think that's a trend too across Colorado, if I'm not mistaken, maybe you're familiar with that. As someone who used to ride a motorcycle when I was younger. I've even noticed a trend, perhaps since the law changed that allows for lane splitting. I know that that is supposed to only be at very low speeds, but I'm seeing much different application of that. Whether they are unaware or whether they don't care, I'm not really sure. But I know I have seen a huge uptick in very aggressive lane splitting. And I've seen some very close calls. So I think, again, trying to connect to the policy stage and what we might want to consider as policymakers, that's an interesting one. Just more of an observation. And then I think as Commissioner Williams is talking about having her keys taken away. One thing that I think is going to really be interesting to watch on these numbers too. Is the emergence of self-driving on the stage. Because I think while that is a very scary thing for many of us. The research I've seen shows that there's actually far fewer errors, which is not completely unsurprising. That, you know, humans are humans. And so I think it's going to be really interesting to watch, especially for aging populations who are less. You know, less, feeling less confident behind the wheel perhaps, and to watch what that might do to the numbers as that comes on the scenes. There's a couple of things that I'm curious about as we get down the road, maybe those will, those will be things in your mind as well. But really think that those are some things that could dress, we could see drastic changes in our community, so. All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you so much for taking the time today.
You're very welcome, thanks for having me.
Okay, do we have any other countywide elected officials? None online, and I see none in the room, so we will bring it up here, beginning with Commissioner Nelson.
I don't have a lot to report today. Last week was the Board of Health meeting and we're just still reviewing our budget. And then also the needs of our community and analyzing various. Services that we're providing throughout and locations and trying to make decisions on the needs of our community. And also then the expenses to support those needs and what makes the most sense to have a sustainable budget. So that's a super high level explanation of the work we're doing there. I had opioid abatement council last Wednesday and the coroner came with a request for this new toxicology screening. And that was really interesting to learn more about her work there and then today. And this week is a little bit of a lighter workload as far as meetings and committees and things that we serve on. And so I'm really grateful and so I appreciate you all being here this morning, thanks.
Commissioner Applegate.
Thank you. Can I, yeah, can I mount the screen? Thank you. So today is the October twenty eighth. We are on twenty eight days of the federal government shutdown. I heard a comment when I was in DC by one of our members of Congress from Colorado. Not passing a budget on time or getting it to it in like September, like two weeks before. It's like a florist that doesn't know what day Valentine's Day is. It's honestly embarrassing. We're sitting here and our Congress can barely get the bare minimum done. In the meantime, they continue to collect taxes and they continue to get paid. I have two friends right now that are either on some kind of furlough or some kind of reduced hours due to the shutdown. In a recent conversation with our lobbyist, thank you for Ryan Purcell, who sent me up with that call. Both sides don't even want to talk to each other at this point. This is unacceptable, this is a joke. I want, called an action, I want everyone to reach out to our, call our US senators, John Hickenlooper and Michael Bennett. Call them, email them, flood their inbox, flood their voicemail and tell them this needs to stop, this needs to end. I know everybody's digging their heels in and they want to set new records, they want to set new, new goals, they want to go past whatever election date. Or whatever date before they had. It's just embarrassing at this point. We need to continue this and as, as not only is the government shut down and our workers are getting furloughed. Now we're in risk of losing SNAP benefits for the state and our county even. This is horrible, so I hope you'll join me. I'm going to plan on emailing, I'm planning on reaching out and calling. Our federal government needs to end this shutdown. It's unacceptable and it's getting ridiculous.
Fisher Williams.
On that same subject, I know that I did send out to several pastors I am aware of. Just on the SNAP benefits that will not be fulfilled coming November first, the first ten days of the month are when those load onto cards. I think it's very important for everyone to realize that this is not just a local problem. This is not a Waldo Canyon fire, or Black Forest fire, or California fire, where everybody else can pitch in. This will be a national problem. And so wherever you can help friends or families in need, we would greatly appreciate that. Because I know I'm worried about many people who will not be able to have the access to the food that they need. I wanted to issue my condolences to the family of Merv Bennett. He was a great city councilman, just one of the sweetest gentlemen I've ever met. Was sorry to hear about his passing. And this week's schedule is pretty clear. And this week's schedule is pretty clear. I wanted to thank our Public Information Office, especially Natalie Sosa, because we're working on two presentations. On Wednesday, we're presenting to, I've got to make sure I have the right name, the Mayor's Fellowship Group, that is tomorrow morning. And then they're going to be here, we'll be presenting for them. And then on mid-November, we're presenting to the Northern El Paso County Homeowners Association. So I've got the Public Information Office working on two separate presentations right now, and we just appreciate the wonderful effort they go to to make sure those are prepared for me, because I can't just make it as good as they do. And I think those are the only things I have to announce. Open enrollment is this week for those employees who are listening. I tried to get through that mostly successfully. And just appreciate everything our employees do. And also, I wanted to state, I didn't state this for the coroner, but really appreciate the work the coroner and the District Attorney's Office do. Some of these deaths are very hard to investigate, so thank you.
I appreciate the acknowledgement of the death of Merv Bennett. Thank you for that, Commissioner. I also have a lighter week, as others have said. Some weeks are really busy here at the county with the scheduled meetings and are more like 60-hour weeks. And we're running from, you know, early morning to, into the evening, attending those meetings. And then some weeks are a little lighter and allow for us to do the catch-up work on all the various different things that we are working on. So this week is one of those weeks, but I know when we say lighter, we're still here, we're working hard, but it certainly is different than when we're in meetings from kind of morning to evening type situation where we can do the work that needs to be done in the office. So I, I'm also grateful to have a little bit of a lighter week to be able to catch up on so many of those other things. I too want to say thank you to the community who is proactively looking to, to fill the need in our community due to the shutdown. I also know that this is really impactful to our community. We have all signed on to letters at this point, asking our senators to please pass the Clean CR. It's not a difficult ask. It, it makes a lot of sense. And so we just continue to encourage that to be the case so that we can see folks get back to, get back to work, and, and we can see the government function again. In particular, I want to thank the folks in my community of Falcon, who've worked really hard to provide additional food to the Eastern Plains Pantry. I know that that's been a huge effort. I'm very grateful for the community members who are willing to step up. I also want to say thank you to USAA. For folks who may not bank with USAA or may not be familiar, I know when my husband and I, when my husband was still serving in active duty, we were actually overseas, and there was a shutdown. And USAA at that time was able to take care of their members by continuing to pay them, even though the government was actually not. And so they did that through their own internal resources at USAA. USAA has done a similar program at this point that is offering interest-free loans for folks who are experiencing that. I'm really grateful that there are private industry who will also step forward and do the best to support folks who are experiencing that right now, that there's quite a bit, and quite a few people who aren't able to sustain not getting paid for several weeks at a time. So really appreciative of those who have stepped up to try and fix that. Still continue to ask, pass the Clean CR. It's the right thing to do. We know SNAP benefits are going to be impacted. And it's the right thing to do for our community to get that rolling and then have every debate in the world about what they want to have in the Senate. Other than that, I, I just, again, want to say my condolences to the family of Merv Bennett. I know that he was revered in our community for all of his great work. And with that, we will move on to item eight.
Item number eight is community service organization reports, and there are none.
Item nine.
Item number nine is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda. And Madam Chair, I'm unaware of anyone signing in ahead of time to speak today.
Okay, if you are here to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. I'd ask you to come forward at this time. Just a reminder that we'll need you to state your name for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jane Fromey, and I am a recent retiree from the Sheriff's Office. It took me about a year to decide whether or not to retire. Really had to balance kind of time that I may have with my family or some of the financial impacts of that. With the county, as you know, we get about 2% every year of what, for our pension. So when I retired, you needed to have over 20 years and meet Rule of 75. So at that time, it was like, okay, I'll probably be taking about half of what my salary would be. So there were a lot of things to think about. Also, I will say that happily, I am, I have a surviving parent. I have an 87-year-old mother who was a special needs school teacher at District 11. So I'm able to spend more time with her. But again, that financial impact. Unlike my mother, who's on para with the county with our pension, we do not receive a COLA. And we go into that knowing that. So that's also something that we have to balance, knowing that our pension will, will kind of shrink as far as our income impact every year. Being a recent retiree, one of the things that I heard for years, hey, you put in your 20 years, you meet Rule of 75, you get free healthcare until Medicare kicks in. And that was a big component during my decision in having to retire. So I was very surprised and disappointed to get a letter that stated, guess what? After a few months of getting your healthcare covered, it will not be covered next year for 2026. And then in 2027, it will double. Again, I was disappointed in that. Then I heard that, gosh, when that vote went through with the Retirement Board, it was kind of pushed through, and that there were three members who were not there to vote. And I thought, gosh, that seems kind of sneaky. Something seems wrong with that. And then recently, I heard that county commissioners now can only need to work eight years to get full retirement and free benefits. And that, again, was disconcerting to me. I'm thinking if the people that we've entrusted with our retirement and looking out for us are keeping benefits for themselves or allowing themselves to have it when they're asking us to sacrifice it, it doesn't seem right. It's bad form. Luckily, I am very grateful that tomorrow that will be reconsidered, that there's a meeting down at the District Attorney's Office, and I hope that that vote is reversed. So I thank you for your time.
I do want to, just for the record, you're fine, go ahead. I just wanted, for the record, remind anyone here who, the past speaker, anyone else who wants to speak on this issue, this is not the body that makes that decision. And that if you want your comments to be considered, I would encourage you, there's an email address that you can email your comments to, employeebenefits@elpassoco.com, and that will go to the board members who do have a vote in that decision. I'm also going to correct the record a little bit here because there was a statement made that this body is making decisions about their own benefits that are not the same. This body doesn't make those decisions. Those were made before anyone on this board was here. And for the record, I would encourage that body to reconsider that. I don't, I would agree, elected officials should not be treated in any way differently. So I, I just want to put that on the record, though, that this is not the body that has made those decisions. Please email your comments to employeebenefits@elpassoco.com so that can be considered by those decision-makers. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Good morning. I'm Tom DeLuca. I'm a retired commander with the El Paso County Sheriff's Office. I know this is not the, the body that makes those decisions, but we want to bring up our concerns as retirees. I did 30 years with the Sheriff's Office. So look at a 30-year-old, brand-new deputy. He'll do 20 years. He's 50 years old when he retires. What we used when we, when we're recruiting and retaining these individuals is that we do not get the amount of pay that other agencies in the area does. But if you do 20 years, you get your medical, which is a benefit. And it's a, a benefit that was promised. And I know individuals that made decisions as 50-year-olds. So it's 15 years that, that as of tomorrow, they may have to pay for their insurance. So I just really ask you individuals as, as our commissioners, county administrator, to, to think about that. It's not penny-wise, because you will lose good individuals because of the, this new decision. So tomorrow, I know the, the board will meet, but there's a lot of concern retirees that would like you guys to be our, our voices for that. And thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, and no one online. Great. Item 10.
Item number 10 is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items called up today.
Item 11.
Item 11 is a resolution opposing Proposition MM, increase state taxes for healthy school meals for all program, and Proposition LL, retain and spend state revenue exceeding the estimate for Proposition FF. Ryan Purcell, Executive Director, Government Affairs.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before you today is a resolution to take a position on propositions LL and MM on this November's ballot. While ballots are, are out currently, the majority of ballots aren't returned until the, the last few days of the election, so this is still timely. But Proposition LL and MM both have to do with the healthy school meals for all program that was adopted by voters in 2022. Proposition LL deals with that by detaboring the revenue resource of the, the tax revenue stream on people earning over $300,000 to fund the program and would allow the state to keep approximately $12 million that was collected over the, the current cap imposed by Tabor on that revenue for the, the program. And then Proposition MM would increase, again, the, the taxes on households earning $300,000 or more with the hopes of generating another estimated $95 million a year to go to the healthy school meals for all program and change the, the permissible use of funds for anything that is collected over what, what estimates say the program needs at this point.
Okay. I actually think that we have an additional slide. I'll let Commissioner Nelson introduce that if she'd like.
Yeah. Thank you. So this additional slide is just to help consolidate what these propositions on your ballot actually mean. It is an attack on Tabor. It discriminates against hard-working citizens. And so we are asking a large body of society to make a decision for a very small group of people that work really hard for their incomes. And so it, let's be very clear that there is already a mechanism in place for those that are in need of assistance. Free and reduced lunch funding exists federally. And so to ask for a very small group of people to pay for lunch for those who are not in need, it just, it encourages dependency on government rather than self-responsibility. And, you know, when it comes to the ask here, they did not manage or anticipate the expense of this program very well. And so Proposition MM is also asking for essentially another bailout that the taxpayers come and provide more funding to distribute for this program that is duplicating something that the federally funded program already provides for those that are in need. And so I just want us to take a step back and understand what this actually is. You know, as society, we have agreed that we are going to pay for education, that that is a societal right. Now, we are asking for people to feed kids. And again, there's already a mechanism for those that are in need. And I just really want to caution anyone that is considering voting for these propositions to take a hard look at the principles behind what that actually means and that maybe it sounds nice to, oh yeah, let's feed kids healthy lunch. We're actually taking a step towards socialism, going down this path, where we're expecting government and taxpayer dollars to be the provider. And so I really am very passionate about these topics. And I remember when Proposition FF came along. You know, for those that are in need, I believe it should be our neighbor, the church. We are called to love one another, and if someone is in need, then we step in and help serve and provide. And it should not be the role of government to meet those needs. That said, there already is that mechanism through the federal funding with free and reduced lunch. And, you know, people have said that the stigma of kids, you know, having to be recognized as needing that support, that's not in play anymore, because all kids in schools now are given an ID card that is scanned. And so people can't tell where the funding is coming from. The other students are not able to know if that funding is coming from their family or if it is coming from the free and reduced lunch dollars. So if you're hearing that it helps protect against, you know, someone feeling self-conscious about needing that extra support, that, that really is not at play here any longer either. Just, like I said, I'm very passionate about, I appreciate that Tabor was created to restrict the growth of government, and these propositions take us in the opposite direction. They're allowing government to grow.
I want to say thank you to Commissioner Nelson for working to create this slide and giving us a great snapshot of what it actually does. Thank you. Ms. Sheriff Williams.
You know, I remember 20 years ago, when my kids were young, writing out those checks because you would start school, you had to buy clothes, you had to buy school supplies, and then you had to pay for activities, and then you had to write out lunch for four kids. And we, and then I worked at DHS for a while. And the first day I went in there, we discussed what the culture of poverty means. And this is not to say that this is a culture of poverty, but this is a culture of saying the government is going to provide for you. And right now, our state government's doing a terrible job of providing for us. They're not paving roads, they're not balancing the budget. They cannot cut staff when they've, and so I- And so I think that there are other methods for individuals who do need to come in and receive lunch from the school, as Commissioner Nelson has stated. And I think that it's... It does promote dependency on government. And I guess I was just always really surprised because I felt that when we had our kids and we got married, that we were working really hard to try to provide for ourselves. And then I've seen over the years from not individual family members, but from other people and people I've worked with who say, well, we can't make more than that because then we won't be able to qualify for benefits. And that just, to me, goes against the principles of freedom and democracy. We're not here... Where people need it, we have a safety net for dependency on government. And it will not discriminate against kids because now everybody has the same lunch ticket. But to provide all of these children free lunches, including children of people who make a lot of money here at the county, it just... It kind of blows me away that we've been doing that. And I never realized that we were, since my kids have been grown and gone for about 10, 15 years. So it's very frustrating. I would encourage a no vote. I have voted no on these. My ballot's already turned in. And I appreciate this slide because it really explains what we're talking about here. Thank you.
Commissioner Hubblegate?
Yeah. Well, we said the quiet part out loud. There's already a federal program in place that does exactly what our state is trying to do. Seems suspicious now. Again, they're assaulting our Tabor. They're coming after our Tabor rights. They want the extra money. And they're $1.2 billion in the hole. Sounds like a quick and easy, little, simple backfill. They want a little bit more money, a little bit more funding to go where elsewhere. And so playing games again with our Tabor and our money. And I always heard that phrase too. The Tabor, that's ours. That's we, the people, money. So I would urge everyone, no vote on this, the LL and MM.
I'll just add a couple of my own thoughts here as well. I really appreciate the comments from my fellow commissioners all pointing out the reality of this, that if you make $280,000 a year, you will not be able to... You will not be required to fund any of this. And yet your kids will get free food at school. Most people who make that, those amounts of money, and even far below that, feel that they are able to feed their own children. I have also listened to story after story of the poor quality of these meals and how kids dump them in the trash. So this is really concerning to me. Again, the federal government is our... None of us want any child to go hungry. I think we... You know, that's a really good place to start. Nobody wants a child to be hungry. We understand how important it is and critical it is for them to be able to focus at school to learn. At the same point, we already have mechanisms in place. What we are doing is saying, even though the federal government is willing to pay for this, we're going to pay for it again. That's silly. It's a really poor use of our state funds, especially when we know what state our state is in currently when it comes to the budget. So this doesn't make sense. It further goes down the road of, as was said by Commissioner Nelson, government dependency. And it's not the kids, it's the parents. If parents think I'm not responsible for feeding my child, someone else is, that's very concerning. I don't think it's beneficial to our society. I think we really have to take a look at these, go beyond what sounds like compassion, what sounds like kindness, and realize that the implications further down the road are devastating to our community. And so I also will be a no vote on this. Appreciate, again, the staff comparison and also Commissioner Nelson's slide. And I would ask at this point if... Oh, yep, there's more comments. Commissioner Nelson?
Sorry, I thought of one more thing. The point in the ballot measure that says they will help compensate for any need in SNAP benefits, that's just an addition where they're trying to make these ballot measures more appealing. Again, the need is already met through federal funding. And at the federal level, there have been some changes made to SNAP benefits to encourage more accountability and ensuring that abuse and those who truly are able-bodied can provide for themselves and that if you're in need of these SNAP benefits, it's just to help get you on your feet and that it's not a sustainable thing that you're using forever. And so the notion that some of this funding would go towards supplementing some of the changes at the federal level is just a play at not taking accountable our own efforts at administering those SNAP benefits at a state level. Here in El Paso County, we have done an excellent job and have a very low error rate, meaning that our staff are working really hard to make sure that there is not abuse in the system and that people who are not in need of these benefits are gaining access to them and that that funding is actually available then for those who truly need it. And so at the state level, the error rate is higher. And the federal government has said, if you are not holding accountable to these funds, then you, as a state, are going to have to pay more out of your own purse strings. And I appreciate the accountability that the federal government is trying to implement and making sure that those who truly are in need are the ones earning these benefits. And so these propositions, where they've added in the notion of some of this funding being able to go towards SNAP benefits, if we were doing our job well at the state level, that would not be needed. The funding that is provided federally would be enough.
Okay. You've inspired me to have one more comment here as well. I just think it's really easy when I look at this ballot initiative. I think it's really easy to look at those people. You know, that over 300 people, those people, they're fine. It's fine if we take things from them. And I really appreciate the principled conversation we're having here. Because I think that the idea is whether or not it's okay for the government to single folks out who have been successful or who are in that category now, why we would promote a culture of envy in that way is really concerning to me. But beyond that, I think about the veteran business owners that were here today. And I think, you know, a lot of those veterans may have served for a very long time and not made a huge salary and may have sacrificed in a lot of ways. And maybe they get out of the military and they become very successful. And they're able to reach that $300 threshold. I don't want to take that away from them because they've worked hard. They may have spent 20, 25 years not being at that level. I just think it's really hard or really easy for us to put people in a category or say, those people can afford it. I don't care about those people. I'm not worried about those people because they're nameless and they're faceless. But they are our friends and neighbors. And again, it's something that we should all be aware of, that when the government is trying to pit us against another group of citizens, we should be aware of that because it's a very dangerous place. We also... Our government was set up to not have a tyranny of the majority, that individuals still have rights. Minority voices still have rights. It's why we are a constitutional republic and not a direct democracy, which would be mob rule. And this, to me, is a step in that direction, to forget that, you know, the old joke that democracy is two wolves and a sheep, right? You know, having a vote on what's for dinner. That's exactly what we're seeing here, is the promotion of dividing citizens based on that and trying to take away what is essentially their, you know, hard earnings because it's not me, because there's more of us than them. So I appreciate you bringing up that principle and how important it is overall. And if there's nothing additional in terms of the facts here from staff, I think we are ready to proceed with a vote. Or any other comments from commissioners? Okay. And we will begin with Commissioner Nelson.
Let's have a move approval.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we didn't... You're right.
I move approval of item 11.
Second.
Okay, moved in second. And now we'll call the roll. Commissioner Nelson?
So this resolution is opposing propositions LL and MM. So I will be voting aye.
Okay. Okay, aye from Commissioner Nelson. Commissioner Hubblegate? Eyster Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0. Thank you. Item 12.
Item number 12 is the application by The Edge Bar &amp; Grill LLC, doing business as The Edge Bar &amp; Grill to renew the hotel and restaurant liquor license located at 7685 McLaughlin Road, Suite 150, Commissioner District Number 2. Jackie Allred, clerk to the board manager. And Madam Chair, if I might, I'll just provide a brief summary. The licensee received a state violation of the liquor code on November 12, 2024, for sale to a 17-year-old liquor enforcement division underage purchaser and is not eligible for administrative approval. The stipulation agreement in order is attached in the board's backup, and this is the applicant's first violation. And the applicant is present today to answer any questions the board may have.
Hello. Sorry. Good morning. I would first like to say that the incident that occurred on November 12, the ticket that was written on that evening was written underneath Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill. And I am not Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill. I am actually The Edge Bar &amp; Grill. When that incident occurred, I went to the bar immediately. I contacted the enforcement officers. I asked if the employee needed to be removed from the premises. They said no. They said the state will contact you with the next steps. I closed the restaurant immediately. I allowed the people that were there to eat, to finish their meal, but then I closed it immediately because honestly, I was very concerned with what the next steps were going to be. The employee was originally charged. She did plead guilty, but she was required within a six-month period to complete a certain amount of steps. The district attorney consented to allowing the defendant to withdraw her guilty plea if and to dismiss all of the charges if she completed all of these things within a six-month period, which she did. So the state did contact me seven and a half months later. And once again, the violation that they gave us was a Level 1 violation. It was a seven-day suspension, but it was written underneath Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill. And it had the previous owner's name on it. I did let them know that I was not the owner of Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill, that that owner was no longer existent. And so they allowed me to submit a letter to them saying that I was the owner of the new establishment. And they moved forward with the proceedings of the fine. I did pay a significant fine. And we did have a suspension period. I had a temporary license from October to February during the time when this incident occurred, which is why I was very confused as to why the ticket was written underneath Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill. I don't know if that's a commonality, if it's a temporary liquor license, but the temporary license was posted. The individual, the enforcement officer, took it off of the wall and proceeded to find a liquor license that was behind that for Falcon's Edge Bar &amp; Grill. So I'm not sure... I don't know. It just seems... It seems bizarre to me that I was signing for something that did not have my business name on it. But we have taken numerous steps moving forward. I am obviously a small business owner, but I am also probably not well-liked throughout the Falcon community because I take extra precautions. I closed down before everybody else in town. I do not allow anybody under 21 years of age after 8:00 p.m. I have numerous Google reviews that I did bring with me of people who are upset. One instance recently was a female brought in a liquor license that I do believe was valid, but it was not her liquor license or her... I'm sorry, her ID. It was a photo ID. It was valid, but it was not hers. She proceeded to get very upset with me. She proceeded to tell Google that she went to the other local bar in town, and they did accept it. I can only speak for my establishment, but I have numerous people that come into my establishment already intoxicated. They're very forthcoming with information about where they have been, and I refuse to serve them. And then I look like the bad guy, which I am okay with doing because I'm trying to preserve my liquor license. I do have, through our POS system, I do have an ID scanner, but I do not use it because I have been informed that that is not 100% accurate, that it doesn't always detect fake IDs. And I'm not willing to take that chance. I have people that try to bring in gun licenses to use as a valid ID. I only accept actual IDs. I do not even accept electronic IDs on the phone. I know that that's not a common opinion, but with everything going on with AI in the world that we live in, I do not trust that. So they have to have an actual ID. Otherwise, I am not serving them alcohol. I am aware of the severity of the situation, beyond aware. I follow the Colorado Regulations Codes immensely, probably over the top, as some would say. I know that it's my responsibility to protect each patron and employee while following the rules and regulations, but I'm also aware that remaining in shame and humiliated and disgraced for the mistakes that we've made does not make us stronger. And I will not let the present be compromised by the mistakes of our past. I will say that I did not fire the employee because she did follow through with the proper steps. She followed the proper channels of what she was supposed to do. I did shadow that employee for six months, whereas she was not allowed to work by herself, which means I basically worked at the establishment from open to close for almost eight months. It's what I chose to do. Nobody asked me to do it, but I was trying to be overly cautious based off of the severity of the charge. Does anybody have any questions or...
Madam Chair, if I may clarify?
Yes, please.
When the applicant is speaking of the Falcon Edge Bar &amp; Grill, and that was not her business, if I could put it in layman's terms and the clerk to the board could correct me if I make any misstatements. Essentially, The Edge Bar &amp; Grill took over the liquor license for Falcon Edge Bar &amp; Grill. And that's why the liquor license was to Falcon Edge Bar &amp; Grill because she had a temporary permit for the remainder of that liquor license. And then she needs to apply for the new liquor license under The Edge Bar &amp; Grill. Any questions from the board regarding why the two different names and the temporary permit? So she is still liable for the violation that occurred under the Falcon Edge Bar &amp; Grill.
Okay. Do we have questions for the applicant at this point?
So my only question is a legal question. We are approving... If we move to approve, we're approving The Edge Bar &amp; Grill's liquor license, not The Falcon Edge. Okay, got it. No, I appreciate the explanation and your due diligence efforts, actually, with your employee. Most times, they just get fired. So to spend eight months working with her shows a level of commitment that I wouldn't have given. So good for you. And I'm satisfied that this has... That she has met what needed to be done.
Commissioner Nelson?
So this will then cover the temporary that you were just explaining. This now is like the next step, that she will have her own liquor license that she's operating on?
I actually have it. I have a liquor license. It was approved on November 13, which was the day after. I have... I had a temporary liquor license, and then I actually got the liquor license. So I actually have a liquor license. I don't under... I don't know why it was approved when there was this violation, but it was. Does that make sense? I don't know. Jackie may be able to... I don't know.
Yeah, it makes sense. Well, sort of, as much as it can.
I don't know. It doesn't make sense to me either, but...
Could we maybe let the clerk clarify for us?
Sure. If I can provide some clarification. So at the time an applicant applies for a transfer of ownership of the liquor license, they are allowed to have a temporary permit, which allows them to temporarily operate under the old license until they are granted their new license. However, and even though she said her license was approved on November 13th, the state doesn't always notify the county. So we wouldn't have gotten notice of that violation until after her license was approved by the board. And so when they have any kind of violation within that period from the time they started operating and their renewal, they have to come before the board for approval. So it's just, it's a different situation because that violation did happen during her temporary permit and not yet had she gotten her license, but we weren't made aware of that at the time, if that helps.
Yes, thank you. And this is your first violation as a business owner in this arena under whichever license? Okay. Thank you.
Can you give a little more just detail about the violation itself? I know you went through, she was charged and, you know, went through all of these steps, but can you just give us a little more indication of the violation and then specifically outside? Well, that might help me ask some more questions about how we'll prevent it.
She did not ask for an ID for an individual that came into the bar and it was an undercover, an undercover minor who was working with an enforcement agency. So she did not ask for the ID and therefore the enforcement officers came in immediately afterwards.
Okay. And, and speaking to this employee, was it a lack of training? What led to her not IDing that person?
It was, to be completely honest with you, it was just negligence. It was a moment where she took one look at an individual and just assumed it was so. I mean, makeup can do wonders, which is unexcusable. She just was not doing her due diligence. She had already had a certain amount of training, but now she has had an excessive amount of training. And that is what I have instilled throughout the entire climate within the bar.
And then just a question on your decision on to use the POS. I can understand having concerns about 100% valid, you know, validity of those things. But my question is, why not use that as an additional tool to make sure that everyone is doing it? And then you would always, I would assume, retain the ability if you said, you know, again, this doesn't match you, to just use it as an additional tool?
Okay. So I do have it, is on hand at all times, but it was my understanding that if you are to scan a fake ID and it does clear that if that individual is, if there is to be an occurrence, let's say they get in a car accident or whatever it may be, the business is going to be charged as well for serving to someone who has a fake ID. That's not a risk that I'm willing to take. Does that make sense? I mean, I understand that it's probably excessive and I get having.
How do you identify? I guess this is where I'm struggling. How do you identify that it's fake then that is more effective than the, than the database?
Okay. So I'm just going based off of what I know to be true from training purposes. When you hold an ID, actually hold it, you're able to see, you're able to, you're physically able to see it. When you scan it, people are very good at creating fake IDs and things that, I mean, that my brain, I can't even run my brain around. So unless I can physically hold it, I just don't feel like it is 100% accurate in my opinion.
Does the system take a, because we've had a lot of these where we've had different situations. So what I'm getting at though, is the violation that occurred was someone not looking at the ID.
That's correct.
And so I can understand if there's something else suspicious about the ID, even if it's been scanned saying, I'm not taking this, even though it has been scanned because I still think it's fraudulent. I would assume you reserve the right to still be able to do that. But when the problem is that someone's not looking for the ID, does allowing, does requiring them to scan the ID at least create some accountability for the individual?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yes, I would agree with that. Yes.
And so, you know, I don't want to be overly burdensome here and it sounds like you are very concerned about the effects on the community, but it's just a thought that the accountability for the other employees might be having that record of having it being scanned. Since in this particular case, it wasn't a fraudulent ID, but then reserving the right, even if they do scan it, to say there's something suspicious regardless. And so I guess that's what I'm going at is I don't know that has to be an either or would be my thought process.
That does make sense.
So I just ask you to consider that. I agree, as Commissioner Williams stated, that it seems like you're taking this violation very seriously. This is in my district. I have two teenage boys. It's something I say every time someone comes up here. I, I'm concerned for the, for our community. I want to make sure that our community remains a safe place. And I agree with you. It's better to be a bit stringent on making sure that those, those folks are meeting the requirement and truly of legal age than it is to be popular with those who might want to come in and abuse the system. So with that, I, Commissioner Applegate?
I do have one other question. So not, not to dwell too much on the scanner, but it's a countertop one, right? The countertop scanners like the liquor stores have. So I'm assuming that like if someone, if I was like, I was to give you my ID and you wanted to scan it, you would actually physically possess it for a second, right?
That is correct.
Enough you could like, if it was off, say the waiter or something like that was off or you looked at it and went, this doesn't look right. Your employees could identify if it was counterfeit even before they scanned it because, right? I mean, okay.
So, so for example, I'll give you just the example, but going back to the one who did have an ID that I believe was valid, but it was not hers. That's the issue that I'm running into is I feel like it was a valid ID. So I could have scanned it for an additional protection. What I'm saying is it wasn't her ID. What I'm saying is, is that she was using somebody else's ID and it was very clear. I had another employee who actually brought it to me first and said, does this look like the individual that's in this photo? And I said, no, it does not. And I walked over to them and I said, is this your ID? I asked her a few questions. She knew the ID very well, but it was not her ID. I can say that with 100% confidence. So even using the additional scanner, even holding it, I felt like it was, it was a valid ID. It just wasn't her valid ID. Does that make sense? I don't know if that answered your question or not.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
I'm going to ask staff if you have anything to add.
Madam Chair, if I may, Terry Sample from the county attorney's office. I just wanted to make it clear with the state violation and the stipulated judgment that they are currently going through. I am not.
Thank you. Okay. Ask for any final comments or a motion?
I would move approval of the application by the Edge Bar and Grill to renew their hotel and restaurant liquor license.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. I don't see any final comments, so we'll move to the vote with Commissioner Nelson first.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes four zero.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 13.
Item number 13 is department and committee reports, non-action items, and there are none.
Item 14?
Item 14 is the addendum and there are no addendums today.
Item 15?
Item number 15 is the executive session, 15A Executive Session pursuant to CRS 2464024F regarding personnel matters pertaining to the annual performance review for the county administrator and 15B Executive Session pursuant to CRS 2464024F regarding personnel matters pertaining to the annual performance review for the county attorney. Nathan Whitney, First Assistant County Attorney, and Nicole Evans, Interim Chief Human Resources Officer.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Moved and seconded. I will call the roll. Commissioner Nelson?
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate?
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes four zero. We are in executive session.